I am.
I'm going to call me an order. May presence, may?
Present.
Rick.
John.
Here.
No.
Vote for the decision.
Vote for the decision by the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, only nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Get a motion for the consent agenda. Over. Motion for second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public input. This is time and place for discussion. Adams and I are on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Discussion possible action in reference to tree board member.
So we received an application from Jennifer Donovan, who lives here tonight. And she would like to be a member of the tree nature park board. She came to previous meeting, represented barns. She showed some genuine interest in nature park and barn area. And I feel that she'd be a good fit for this group. Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
What are we, how many opens are there?
I believe it's a, is it a five voting number?
Yeah, I think so.
Five voting number, and then they can have extras. I know they don't have that.
The motion?
Motion to approve our appointment.
The motion to a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion possible action in reference to approving new fire department member.
So this is for Tanner Frank. He's an advanced E and T that's currently lives in Lisbon, is also on the ambulance service. He's going to continue working for the ambulance service as well, so it's not like we're taking one of their people. The review board met with Tanner, and they recommended approval to the fire department. And at the last business meeting, the fire department approved that and moved it roster. This brings us to thirty-nine members out of forty available.
Motion to approve. The motion to a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion possible action in reference to hold harmless agreement and update our barns and fires.
Alright, so if you recall, one of ENCE's requirements was a hold harmless agreement and a waiver of segregation in reference to work comp. Basically over, if they have an employee on site that gets hurt, their work comp is basically telling us that they can't come after us. So that's been done, it's going to be added to the contract. And then this whole harmless agreement, this is between us and OPN Architects. OPN is coming to town on Wednesday, and they're going to be doing the lasering of the beams. And this is the historic preservations project. They received private donors as well as a grant to help fund this. So they're going to be doing, it's basically structural engineer work, they laser them. They're going to come back with a preservation plan. I've talked to the gentleman at OPN, his name's James, numerous times. He's been very good to work with. He understands the situation that we're in with the barns, so he's going to have their structural engineer also here. And they are going to give us the cost to what it would make all three of them to be structurally sound. So this agreement has been through OPN, they've agreed with it, as well as Mark Parman, our city attorney. And I've also gone to the insurance company and got the Scott and ENCE. He sent this off to them, and everything's good with them. So Mark requested that I put this on just to have it be official action by council to enter that agreement for the whole.
I just, I just got a question. So when you fix these barns up, what's, what's it going, what are, what are we going to use them for? Is it just historic preservation or?
Well, I don't know. What I do know is we have a timeline to the end of October. That they, that two of them have to come down, and the third one has to be fixed. That's realistically not possible to, to get, I don't even know if we'll get one fixed by October, so.
Phil, I'm just, just asking a question, what are they, what are you going to, what are they going to be used for? Are they going to be used for stuff going inside them or?
It depends on how much, it depends on how much work we want to do on them, if we can have people in them. That's all, that's all still open. We're looking for what people want to use them for, what the school wants to use them for, that sort of thing.
What would the school use in the areas?
Um, the school is interested in using the whole park with the prairie and the barns and the pond and everything for outdoor classrooms.
Outdoor what?
Outdoor classrooms. It's going to be a big thing with schools, and so the kids are only two blocks away to come over and learn about prairie and nature or history, that sort of thing.
It could be used for storage depending what point they're fixed up enough so city employees could go in. I, I don't envision that.
Right, right, there's all kinds of things they could be used for.
It wouldn't be something the general public would just go in any time of the, if they wanted, that would be, you know.
Another thing could be like self-guided tours for people to come in. Not, not go in, but to be able to go to the front doors and look in and have on their phone self-guided tours with signage and stuff too. So there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of possibilities with them. To bring in tourists and to help the school and to have something for the people in town.
I, I just, I just didn't know what the understanding was, but I was thinking more like if they did have to tear these things down, put, put a pool building up and have like farmers markets and stuff like that, that's what I was wondering.
Well, that would be a pretty small part of what we'd, we'd be using the barns for. But we can talk about that more later, but yes, that's, we're trying to get some information for you guys to be able to answer just that question, Ricky.
I think that was my, I think from my understanding is that this next step is getting them laser to kind of see how much it's going to cost. And then once we know that, it'll be easier to kind of say which one of these options is most feasible for what those spaces is going to be used for.
Big enough. Motion to.
The other thing I was just going to mention, unless Becky had any updates further than that. I did, if you've noticed, we did put snow fence around the two with caution tape. I did let the insurance company know, and they agreed that until the May thirteenth meeting, which was the deadline, that that would be sufficient for, for now. So we shouldn't incur much other costs in that. And I talked to Jamie at OPN, and he understands the May thirteenth deadline, and he's going to have that report back to us prior to that or try to, so. You have anything else to add, Becky?
Um, no, I think that covers, well, we'll try to answer all your questions as we go along here.
Got motion to, through the whole harmless agreement?
Make a motion.
Motion to a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion possible action in reference to seeding fertilizer and maintenance of soccer fields.
Alright, um, I don't know if you've, you've been out to the sports complex. Drake, you can kind of help me through this, but I believe it's been seeded a total of three times. Twice was outside the seeding window. The last time was double seeded within the seeding window. We're still a long ways off. It looks good from the road, but if you walk out in there, it's, it's not very good. So the thought was, you know, obviously it was a dry year last year, wasn't, wasn't good for growing grass. We did water it extensively. It's obviously been a pretty good start to the spring. We still don't have the results we want. Alex Craftcut is here tonight. This is the bid you have in front of you. Our intentions were to put irrigation out there. It's going to be seventy, seventy thousand to a hundred thousand to irrigate that area is what the, what the cost is. After meeting with him, he recommends doing a maintenance program and being aggressive with it, and get that grass to grow and get it established before you put irrigation in, because it's quite possible that you may not have to put irrigation in if you get this established right. So Alex is here tonight, he can kind of tell you kind of in a nutshell what he went over with us. But long story short, the, what you have in front of you is through July. And Alex believes by July, we're going to have an understanding of where we need to go at that point. The good thing is with this, if grass still isn't where we want it in July, you're not losing anything by this, because you're still adding nutrients to the soil. It's not like you're throwing money away, it's still there, it's a great base for it. But he's pretty confident that there's really an outside chance we could have false soccer out there if we follow this program. So Alex, you want to come on up and?
Yeah. Have you answered any questions? Do you have any insight, is there any questions that I can answer for you?
What kind of seeding would you be doing?
Um, it would be considered an overseed. We would put about five hundred pounds of primarily fescue blend with just a little bit of bluegrass. Fescue we've found is the hardiest variety of grass. So in this application, where we don't have an irrigation system, that would be the variety of choice, so.
Would you be putting any mulch down to hold moisture?
Um, not at this point in time. There is enough grass cover there that I don't feel that that is necessary. If it was completely bare, then I would recommend to mulch it. It's definitely something that we could do to help promote it. But it's, you know, it's, it's an extensive cost to do that, so. Like I said, I feel like we can get a pretty good result without doing that.
One thing I needed to mention that I should have prior to this. So Alex has done the solar baseball fields. You guys have been down there. He also helped the school with the football field. I think the football field looks really, really nice. I mean, I coached there for several years and played there before that, and it's the nicest playing surface we've ever had. So that's how I've got the ball rolling, I know he's done some work at the golf course as well here. So that's where I went to, obviously he specializes in this, so that's why we went this route, just because I've seen the solar field and the Lisbon football field, so.
Okay, so water it, what's that one? You know, the sprinkling, the quick giant sprinklers, if we have another dry year, post it and sprinkling irrigation?
We went and bought tripod sprinklers.
That's, yeah, that's.
We moved them around out there, it was kind of a pain, but the, the point was the only thing that grew was water grass. So we tried, we were doing it all different times, and we're trying to do it when they tell you you're supposed to grow grass, and it just, it just didn't work.
This, this plan will prevent the water grass, it will promote proper grass. And as far as, yeah, I'm, I'm worried making this investment and a drought wastes this money. But we'll, with your advice, I imagine we'll avoid that with tripod watering or whatever.
I will say, we have a local contractor that does the bare minimum maintenance on a lot of the baseball fields now. And keep in mind, the school also pays some of this, or pays this company as well when they lease it. But we, we pay five to six thousand a year just to park alone for the bare minimum of this stuff. So just to kind of put in the perspective of.
But they have, they have irrigation watering built into it, that field does.
Correct.
Both fields do.
Yep.
Currently now, they do?
It's not very good, but yes.
No, it's not good.
It's a, how many heads are out there, Travis?
Sixteen or nineteen.
So it's not a.
Agreed, so it's still.
But I mean, we got, we got to get grass to grow here before we can even dig up with irrigation and this stuff.
Yeah, that was the conversation that Brandon and I had. You know, you can go in there and put an irrigation system in, maybe spend a hundred grand. You're, you're going to get a step up in the quality, but you still have to feed that plant and, and give it nutrients. And that's, and that's maybe not even something Brandon and I talked about. You mean, you've seeded it three different times, maybe four times, and watered it, and still have, you know, the result that you have. And so what I've seen over the years in my experience is, you know, you, you put grass in the ground and, you know, everybody thinks that, yeah, it's going to take off, there's black dirt there. But it, it takes a lot of nutrients to get a bare piece of ground up to the point of where it is sufficient to take care of itself. A prime example would be the park now, you know. Albeit that they do put nutrients and, and chemicals out there to, to help things, you know, it took, you know, fifty, a hundred years for it to get to that point where it kind of takes care of itself and it doesn't need a lot of inputs. And so what we found is to, to speed up that process, what we did over at the football field at the high school, that was kind of a slow process, it took us about three years to get it to where it is. And we're going to take and condense that into about a six-month period, three, four months to start with, kind of get an idea of which direction we're, the results that we're happy with. And then decide if we want to continue on down the path of adding nutrients to it or pull plug and go do the irrigation system as well.
I guess that's my question. What are you proposing to do to the fields over there now? Is it the, is it actually the baseball softball fields?
Soccer fields.
Just the soccer field?
But I have a feeling we're going to run the same problem with the baseball fields.
Yes.
So how much money have you, have you spent on the grass and the whole project so far, deal with the grass?
We paid, so the original project, they went in, Dave Schmidt went in and paid. They went in and seeded again, that was part of the project. The third time, we paid time and materials. Christine, you have that, tough, you have what we paid. And I know the last time we had fertilizer in Jordan split seed down last fall, it was a thousand dollars.
So you're saying, oh, no, no.
Yeah, there's not, we don't have, we, we probably have less than thirty-five hundred dollars of, other than time, of actual dollars into it, other than what the project called for.
And how many baseball fields?
It's the soccer fields.
Oh, right.
Two baseball fields.
What do you got? It's a three acre, right?
About five acres there is what we have.
So you can do the outfield, two outfield.
Drake, how many soccer?
Can you write a grant turfing it?
Um, probably twelve.
I think if you, honestly, if you wanted to turf it, I think you can get a grant. I think that would be for actually the baseball fields.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. This, this part right here would be strictly for what's there on the south side for the soccer field.
Okay.
Yeah, to turf five acres of field would be.
I always thought that's what they should have did in Lisbon, in the football field, but that's just.
Yeah, yeah, that would be like three and a half instead of seven million dollars. Yeah, I mean, and then you're talking, you're on a timeline, man, of about ten years, and then you got to come up with another three to five to replace it.
So with the law, extra money in your taxes, I don't know what to do. I'm just, I'm just saying that, um, I just, I hope we can do it. We believe in you.
But I, I understand what Rick's saying too, you know, I mean, we're built to, we're going to build to sports, our sport, baseball fields. I mean, we want to be able to make sure we can grow grass on those too.
Yeah.
We're saying, you know, if we get grass to grow on this, why don't we do that too? So we know we're going to get grass there, or we won't even have the company do it, and we didn't get grass on this, you know.
Yeah, that I'm confident, that was something that Brandon and Drake and I talked about. You know, there's, the soil that's there is capable of growing grass, because there's grass there, there's weeds there. Sometimes we've got a new product where you can't hardly get grass to take, and you get more weeds or very little weeds, and then you've got the real problem where you've got bad soil and trying to fix that. So this is a matter of, you know, getting the right nutrients down and getting on schedule and getting it grown in. And then once we get it grown in, it'll, it'll be a good safe product for you.
You know, like, you know, we sit here and make decisions, but we make our decisions based on what the experts tell us, you know, whether it's him, whether it's Brandon, you know, we make our decisions on what we are told. I mean, I mean, he's, he's putting his business on the line here, you know, saying that he can do it, I mean.
Make a motion to the iron.
Make a motion, pay that.
Second.
A motion is second to seed fertilizer maintenance of soccer field complex. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's grass in town.
First farm.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Next meeting is in two weeks, and we would like to be bitching about other.
Bastard. Grass to grow.
Or going too much.
Call Brandon.
Public hearing for reselling of four five project. Do you motion to go public hearing?
Motion to go public hearing.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Christine, you have this.
Awesome.
Public hearing, second of the line.
So this is our regular budget. We are to the point now where this is the final step in submitting our budget to the state and to the county. We kind of ran down some of these numbers with the special meeting when we had to go over that here just recently. But it just is a reminder that our property taxes will be going down point oh two. So we did a very nice job. We did increase our property taxes that we, that were, the monies that were bringing in, but yet still had ways to stay within the budget to keep that tax rate reasonable for our citizens. If anybody has questions, Brandon or I can help them.
Any questions?
Just so everybody knows, we didn't have to go through and basically all that wants or asks were, were given, so.
Any questions? Motion to go public hearing?
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution ten, twenty twenty-four, approve in fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Motion to approve the resolution ten dash twenty twenty-four.
Got a motion of second?
Second.
Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig? John?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
So public hearing for, resolution eleven, twenty twenty-four, approving utility lien.
So this is our quarterly lien, it seems to be quarterly, five oh three South Jackson. These are people that have the water shut off with the lock on it, still not using water. I did speak with the individual who lives there, said he was living in Cedar Rapids, and the house will be going up for sale shortly. Take that as you wish.
Motion to approve the resolution with for lien.
Got motion of second?
Second.
Kevin?
Aye.
John? Rick? Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
So public hearing for rezoning request.
So this is going to be for a request that's into P and Z. We have a meeting this Wednesday night for a potential rezoning of a lot, Long Highway thirty to residential. We'll have that meeting Wednesday, and then they'll present a recommendation to you on the twenty-second. So we'll need a motion for a public hearing for the twenty-second April.
Was that what they discussed, the, the, was that thing called? Planters?
Yeah.
Now, do I know? Got a motion to, just public hearing for the twenty-second.
So moved.
A motion of second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading of ordinance oh one, twenty twenty-four, updated chapter ninety-two.
So this is the second reading of the scheduled increase of water per Maggie at Spear Financial, reference to bond.
Motion to approve the resolution, as written.
A motion of second?
Second.
Mike?
I guess, yeah.
And I'll get a roll call.
Yes.
Nate?
Aye.
Rick? John?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance oh two, twenty twenty-four, sewer re.
Sewer.
Same thing, this is sewer version of that, reference discussions with Maggie at Spear Financial.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion of second?
Second.
Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rick? Aye. John? Aye. Second reading of ordinance, ordinance oh three, twenty twenty-four, per pavilion use fee.
Again, this one is just removing the language about the, the cost of park pavilion, because our ordinance says the park and the record set the cost. So if they choose to raise it, therefore you can just do this by resolution through council instead of having to go through three readings.
Who to approve? The motion of second?
Second.
Rick?
Aye.
John? Aye. Kevin?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance oh four, twenty twenty-four, go on turf permits.
This is the same thing. It can be done by resolution if you pull it out of there, so that all our fees are set in a resolution. There's no fee increase, this is just making it so we can do it by resolution if we want to.
Motion to approve the changed ordinance.
Got motion of second? Nate? Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rick? Aye. John? Aye. Kevin? First one's D and R inspection letter.
You guys should have all got a copy there. A lot of it's just the normal stuff. The two things that we got kind of dinged on was, we got an island kind of in the middle of the lagoon area, which is a retention basin for high flows for storms. It didn't freeze very thick this year, I just feel comfortable walking on the ice to go cut it down. They were okay with that, so. Next winter, we'll gladly get that out of there when we can do it without taking a dip. And then we had one pH where our limit is six point, or six point five is our low limit for pH. We had a six four. Across the state, six to nines the, the normal. I, they get to be able to tell me why we're at a six five, it's just one of those weird things. We'll address it in our next permit, but they said, don't worry about it. They just said, next time it happens, to give, to take it three times and then do the average, so. Other than that, they were happy with everything.
Mr. Open House invite.
Thank you, just wanted to, hopefully you all got my email, but.
I included it in here, and Kate, so we knew who was going.
Excellent, that'd be great. April fifteenth, we are going to do a council walkthrough of the police department and the construction project, which are, you know, is finishing up a few punch list items from that perspective. So we'd definitely love to have everybody there if we can. There'll be, it'll be five thirty, be a quick, obviously you have to open up a meeting if there's going to be multiple of you there, to make an official meeting with an agenda. And then we'll take tours, walk a tour through the, the construction, the renovations that we've done, answer any questions, give you an opportunity to see that. We will be planning a public open house, probably this summer. We're trying to figure out when exactly we want to do that. You know, whether it's during the festivals or whether, you know, hit something like that, or we do it during police week. I tried to identify, identify that date for the general public to come out there and do something special for that, and let them take a look as well, so. Beyond that, that's all I got for the invite.
You've only got three talks, nothing else, are you going to go to them? Is there food and beverages?
Quick snacks and throw some crackers at you.
I would like to.
Yeah, please, I, I.
I didn't even know some, you know, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay. No, I'd like, I'd like to have as many as I can, so.
I'll just post in the gym that way we'll cover it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Report, city engineer.
Paying at the intersection of Main and Washington is nearly complete. We have a little bit of work to do yet. Uh, the valve in front of the history center, um, by the bank, uh, we gotta put some pavement down around, working by Lloyd's. Get that done yet as well. And then, uh, hopefully by Thursday, we're planning to get that open to traffic. Uh, we do still have one crossover for Water Main at South Street on Washington, and we'll try to do that, uh, one lane closure, so that we can still get traffic through. But, uh, that'll be done. Hopefully by the end of April, we'll have everything completed on that project and have them out of here, with the exception of some touch up on seating and whatnot, um, that'd be done. But we're getting close.
No, we already started to tear it up on the top of the hill at Algers. For Water Main problem.
Yeah, I know over Monroe, uh, trying to get that, uh, four inch abandoned. Uh, there's a little bit of work taking place on that as well. But, uh, most of it's complete. The big stuff's done and, uh, just get open up here and get this closed out. I've also been working on trying to get the overlay costs for Business Thirty. We've got that broken into two phases. And then we're looking at Washington Street, the, um, joint retrofit. We have to go in and, uh, put dowels in and try to get those, um, those joints shaved down a little bit and do an overlay on it. So working through those costs. I'll get those to Brandon tomorrow. Uh, we'll make a decision on whether we do all of Business Thirty or if we have money available to do that in Washington, or if we have to do, uh, maybe a combination of some parts. So working to get that completed, and then we're still, uh, working away on the, um, si- situation with the well as far as, uh, how we proceed with that. So that's what I have for tonight.
Is that, um, the Highway thirty, that, that's gonna be an overlay?
Yes, so we looked at, uh, also adding con- our asphalt shoulders to that instead of the gravel. But as you go off the edge, it tends to, uh, have the edge of the asphalt chip away. It also has a little bit of a rut there that we have to maintain. If we can get the line and then four feet of asphalt, that's not all that much more expensive than going in and digging out the shoulders after we do the overlay and building it back up. We've seen that on other projects. So the cost that I'm going to bring up has that four foot asphalt shoulder, six inches thick, to try to help save that edge and reduce the maintenance.
Do a mirror what's out there at, uh, Five Four Out, yeah, right.
And the, so what, what is going on with the Algers? What, what, uh, do you know?
Well, we're just abandoning the four inch. There was a four inch and then a, the eight inch running down to their ten inch. Um, the city put in years ago. They never tied the service lines for those houses, so we can abandon that four inch. Boy, the four inch has got, I think, six Band-Aids in it in my time there, and we just abandoned that and moved the services under the new P C nine hundred line.
So, well, when you, what about that fire hydrant on, what about those?
That fire hydrant is going away temporarily.
Temporarily?
Well, I'm hoping in the future, we'll be able to replace it with a different one. So for this project, that hydrant is just going away.
That hydrant's on the four inch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was unusable.
Yes, you can't use it.
Yeah, it's just a flushing hydrant, so.
What do you have to do? Travis speaking.
Uh, the one thing I did, should have said during the inspection letter thing was, so in that permit, it also states that, or in the inspection, you know, we're only supposed to hit eighty-five percent removal for C V O Ds and T S Ss, and we're in the mid-ninety. So we're well above the minimum on that, so hopefully everything keeps going. We can handle more growth down there. Um.
I did, I did see on that, uh, you're the grade three, Robin's a grade one. Do we got anybody else working it?
No. Well, Jake's in the process of working on it, and, uh, Robin's in the process of working on it.
Well, Robin will be grade two?
Yes.
And Jake, straight to get grade one.
Grade ones. Uh, once Robin's done, and Ryan expressed interest in trying to go for it, figured two at a time was plenty of trying to go through. Um, hopefully Monday, Monday and Tuesday, we should have the excavator and most of our parts at Sports Complex that we need, so we need to start on that next week. Um, we're gonna go around and hit leaves, hopefully, for one of the final times for the spring. Um, cemetery cleanup's happening this week, along with, we're gonna try to settle some graves out there and do some more dirt work there and around town where we caught the edges with the plows and got into some sod. Um, this is about the time we normally get the street sweeper out. I know Doug, you like to ask where it's at. I wanna wait until, I wanna wait until Brecky's completely out of town um, before we're leapfrogging around construction sites and that with machines. So as soon as they're done, we'll get the sweeper out running on.
The trees that were planted last fall, is that gonna fall on the city? Or is there a separate tree board that's kind of, there's a lot of them that are crooked and?
That's compaction issue due to the Water Main project. So like in front of your house, when they come to fix that, we're gonna supersaturate the area to get the root ball loose easy, and we'll stake it up. So we're gonna work.
I just see some around that is that way, and I didn't know. Since you didn't mention it, I didn't know. You guys are doing it, or?
Uh, we're working with Brecky on that, and we'll, it'll be a group effort to get those done.
So when we get done with downtown here, then we're going up to School Street?
Yes, South, South, South Street.
How long will that do?
Uh, a couple of days. And then obviously, the, they gotta pour a driveway in that area, and then they'll have to pour their excavation up. So hopefully that'd be a four we could do on a Friday. Everything will be open back up Monday, on a Monday.
We're gonna go with anything else?
Yeah.
Any questions for Travis? First one.
I don't have much. Uh, we have our Easter event, uh, at the end of March, so that went really well. Um, we will start our first games for spring soccer tomorrow at the park. Uh, other than that, Brian and I are gonna start mowing here. Probably, uh, we'll all start mowing tomorrow, but he's gonna start mowing towards the end of the week. Um, and I've just been working on getting diamonds ready, um, edged up and everything for the season, so.
And then, Greg?
Over in the, the toy section where the slides and stuff are, there's a cone over, is, is that toy repairable?
Where in the digger was that? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
The little.
Digger was here.
Yes. Um, we, we have one where, oh, I'm working with a group, um, four H group. They are helping pay for it, um, and we're gonna get it put in as soon as it arrives. So they applied for a grant, and that'll be.
I just didn't know if it was a yea or a nay on.
Yes. So there's nothing there right now. While there's something sticking out of the ground, that's why the cones are there. But, um, the actual piece is gone, so it'll be repaired.
Anything for Greg? Who can do further? Uh, Easter bunny?
We had quite a few. We probably, I would say between forty and fifty kids at the park, so. We do ours a little bit different than Mount Vernon. We don't, uh, actually boil eggs or decorate eggs and bring them, and they hunt for their own eggs. So I think it, it's mainly Lisbon kids that usually attend, and then obviously Mount Vernon's got their big one where they, um, put plastic eggs all over the place. So I know they get a pretty good turnout over there, too, so.
Yeah, it's tied into fire breakfast, so.
Yeah, and the fire is breakfast too over there, so. But no, I think we had a good turnout, so.
Library character?
Nothing.
Police department.
Uh, we assisted with the, had an officer go over the Lisbon schools and conducted alcohol awareness training in a couple of their health classes, and assisted with fatal vision goggles. Uh, so had a good time with that. We also assisted their staff on professional development day with active threat training, um, facilitating through there. And just the other thing that's kind of uptick, ticking right now would be fraud reports are, um, climbing everywhere. So, um, the government is not going to call you and tell you you have to pay money right away. Um, they'll get their money elsewhere, but if they're calling demanding a bond payment for your grandson who's in jail or identifying themselves in different aspects, um, please do not give them identifying information. Go to your trusted sources. So that's about it.
Anything for Doug?
You bet.
Anyone else?
Nothing.
Fire chief? Uh, nothing fire related. Susan, is there? Uh, as Travis said, doing the seeding and some stump removal, uh, finishing that up. Um, also, they're working on the alleys. Uh, they did one by Y D's today, um, but several more they'll touch up and, um, keep going with that. Um, the guy's been working pretty hard over there at the ponds, babysitting that. Um, you can see that the level rose up pretty good, so, um, obviously the rain, snow, whatever it was helped. Um, but it's kind of, I would say, back to a normal, we're close to a normal level, so, uh, that's good. Um, we're in that, uh, twenty eighty agreement with the county. Uh, today they were out, uh, working on Gillette Lighten, so that looks really nice because it was in pretty bad shape. Um, I've been dealing with a lot of, uh, permits and, um, people putting up sheds. Just remember, um, anything over a hundred and twenty square feet has to be permit. And then also, even though if it's under a hundred and twenty square feet, you still have to meet the setbacks. So a lot of people don't know that. So if you hear people, just make sure that they still come down and know what the setbacks are. Um, seven feet in from the side of your property, fifteen off the rear of the property, um, it's gotta be in the backyard. So, uh, there's been a lot of issues with that, um, the last six to eight months, so, uh, we hope that'd be appreciated. Um, went to the employee, Iowa employment conference in Des Moines last week, uh, very good. Uh, talked about, uh, law updates, uh, a lot of H R stuff. Uh, every year they do different, uh, updates, uh, on laws and what pertains to employment, drug testing, all that type of stuff. Uh, I think there are about seven hundred people there across the state, so, uh, really good stuff there. Um, I met with, uh, Communication Data Link, who's doing the boring for Windstream along Washington Street, along with Alliant. Um, I gave them my concerns with the restoration along Washington Street. Um, obviously, Brecky's got to go back through and fix a lot of the areas too. So, um, our seating window's now open till the end of May, so it's my goal to make sure that there is, um, good, even, level surfaces and, uh, seat beds and seated, um, by the time that window closes. Uh, I don't have a start date on the lower window here at City Hall, but just as a reminder, all the upper windows are done. Um, we wanted to wait on the lower window to try to save some money and not build that internal wall, so that way we waited for warm temperatures. Uh, we were close enough, but I said go ahead with that. So I expect him here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, then the last thing is, just as a general reminder, uh, there's two track meets this week over at the school, uh, Tuesday and Thursday. I think, uh, it's boys and girls. I think it's eleven team or twelve team on Tuesday and then a sixteen team on Thursday. So there'll be a lot of trafficking around there, so please be careful. Um, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Christina?
I will be finishing up the budget this week and working on other reports. I did submit the History Center Westwell for a, an award through the Iowa League of Cities. It's the same award that we got for the solar panels and then also for the splash pad. So we'll see if we get that here this fall. And then next week, I will be gone in Des Moines at my regular I'm at the O L E conference. Excellent.
Anything for Christina? Tom, so who wants to go first? Nate, why don't you go first?
I don't have anything. I appreciate you guys covering for me missing because of Iowa women's basketball, so that's all over, so. I'll be back.
I noticed you were pretty depressed.
I was.
Pretty, um.
Down.
Pretty awesome trip, though.
It was, yeah.
See something I did?
Yeah, because that was very cool.
Mike?
Nothing.
Rick?
Friends of the library is now including the, uh, Mount Vernon zip code in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It was on the cover of the Sun here a couple of weeks ago. I noticed the sun is missing tonight. But, uh, leadership breakfast is this Thursday, the last one of the school year over at Cornell. And thanks for the new volunteers and all the current volunteers. That's all I have.
Jim?
Nothing.
Hmm, what do I make do?
I'll be your son.
Me and you.